Okay, would you please rise? May we act with strength in the benefit of good guidance to perform our duties honestly, wisely, fearlessly, and well for the good of those we seek to serve. Please be seated.
Thank you.
So, before I call the meeting to order, a couple of things I'd like to bring forward for council and for the public. I'd like to welcome Paige McWilliam, who is -- she probably can't see a picture of her because she's sitting behind the camera station there to record the council meeting, but she's come to us by way of town of Pemberton or the community of Pemberton, and we welcome her to take place of Tricia May, who is here as our corporate services coordinator. So, welcome to the city. We're looking forward to having a good, long relationship with you here. So, thanks. I also see that Counselor Bruce's family is in the audience. It's a rare occasion to see family come out and support their council, so welcome, Jan. On a sadder note, much sadder note, I'd just like to give my end councils condolences to the family and friends and colleagues of Katie Tompkins, who's a longtime planner at the Councilon Valley Regional District and was involved in many community plans and neighborhood plans around the regional district and a great contributor. And she'll -- she passed away on Saturday, and she'll be saddened by everyone, so. Okay, so I'll call the meeting to order, and we have one late item, I take it, Ms. Robertson, so it's the -- it's just simply a revision of the already in the agenda report, just so for your awareness, it's been slightly revised. So, I would ask for approval of the agenda. Okay, move second, thank you. Any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, that's carried. Okay, so we have the adoption of the minutes for February 15th, 2006, and a motion to adopt. Thank you, moved and seconded. Any errors or mismatches, discussion? All in favor? Opposed, motion is carried. We go to 4.2, which is the March 7th Committee of the Whole Minutes and a motion also to be adopted. Thank you, second. And any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed, that motion's carried. So, we move first to item 5.1, which is the Chief Administrative Officer's Report, so Mr. Givertai, and it's been circulated to council.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'll just touch on a few of the items. The residential water metering Phase 1 is essentially 100% complete with just a few driveway repairs remaining and a few old buried services we're still trying to locate that our records weren't completely accurate on. So, Phase 2 is just starting today, so they're getting ready within the city limits and converting those residential services, the single-family homes, over to a metered service. And then the billing will be subsequent to that, there'll be a mock bill set out and things like that to educate the public on the change. The Coronation Avenue Traffic Study, the nine proposals that were received that ranged from 17,000 to 45,000 have been reviewed and will be awarded in the near future by staff in keeping with the purchasing policy. This study will review the pedestrian safety and options on coronation, particularly at the Festivus and St. Julian intersections. The draft zoning bylaw is complete and will continue to have internal staff reviews over the next couple of months prior to being presented to an upcoming Committee of the Whole meeting. A marketing strategy, a meeting is being scheduled for the week of March 28th. It appears we may have settled on March 30th, Wednesday, as our selected date, for the consultant to discuss their findings and marketing direction with the Tourism Committee, then subsequently with the BIA. And after those discussions, they will finalize their marketing concept and present that to the Tourism Committee. The tax rate bylaw, the draft, 2016 tax rate bylaw will be brought to the April Committee of the Whole once the revised BC assessment figures have been received. The bylaw will then be brought to the April council meeting for first three readings, and we will have to have a special council meeting prior to the May Committee of the Whole meeting, as the bylaw has to be adopted by May 15th.
Okay. So, any questions, just reserve those for the question period from council. Okay, thank you. So, we move first to reports of committee, and we have item 6.1, and I believe this was from Committee of the Whole, so I believe that was Chairman Jackson, so I'll get Counselor Jackson to read the recommendation out.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. 6.1.1, Gas Tax Strategic Priorities Fund, Joint Utilities Board Outfall Grant Application Amendment. The council supported amendment to the grant application submitted to the federal gas tax strategic priorities fund for the relocation of the Joint Utilities Board outfall from the Couchin River to Satellite Channel to reduce the amount of funding requested from 50% to $6 million and remove the energy recovery facility from the project scope. And that council authorized staff to make application under the second intake of the Build Canada Fund Small Communities Fund for the JUB outfall relocation project to request a grant of $6 million.
I think just move through them all.
Oh, okay, all right, sure.
And then if anybody wants to pull any of those, then we'll bring them back.
All right, so 6.1.2, Paint on Sport Field Facility. The council approved an amendment to the paint on sport field policy to allow youth football to use white paint for lining Macadam Park. 6.1.3, Proposed Service Agreement with Access Data Group Re-Communication Link Between City Buildings. The council approved the five-year agreement with Access Data Group Incorporated for the provision of hardware and software necessary to enable 100 -- what is that?
Millibites per second.
Millibites per second connection between City Hall and Public Works, and a 20 millibites per second connection between City Hall and the train station, substantially in the form as attached to the March 7, 2016, report by the Director of Finance. And the mayor and the Director of Corporate Services be authorized to sign the agreement on behalf of the city. 6.1.4, Junior Council Budget Approval. Request to attend Association of Vancouver Island and coastal communities. That council authorized the expenditure of $583.92 from the junior council budget to cover mileage and meals for junior council's attendance at AVICC on April 8th and 9th, and for T-shirts to be worn by junior council at the conference as attached to the report by the Director of Corporate Services. And 6.1.5, finally, Letter from the City of Port Coquitlam Re-Build Canada Grant Funding. The council endorsed the Build Canada Grant Funding Resolution as put forward by the City of Port Coquitlam.
Okay, thank you. Is there any one of those resolutions that would like to be separated out for debate? Okay, hearing none, those are all moved. Is there a seconder? Seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? A motion says carry. Thank you. We have Counselor Duncan joining by Skype, so you have to -- we -- I want you, if you can't hear clearly, Counselor Duncan, just pipe up so we know, and --
Thank you.
And I will check in with you once in a while, so. We move on to reports of staff. We have the item 7.1, which is the January Building Statistics and the motion that council received that -- that report. Okay, move seconder. Any discussion on those? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. The move to 7.2, the February Building Statistics, and also a motion to receive. Move. Thank you, seconded. All in favor? Opposed, that motion carries. So, we move to item 7.3. This is a request from the Councilon Valley Artisans with respect to raising a banner for an event, and there is -- this is an option here, so the council either, number one, waive the banner's policy for the Councilon Valley Artisans and authorize them to display their banner on the banner pole south of Silver Bridge, March 28th to April 18th, 2016, or, number two, deny the request of the Councilon Valley Artisans to hang the banner as it does not fit the banner's policy criteria. So, what is your pleasure?
I move it.
Okay. So, that is to allow the waiving of the banner's policy and raising that, so any discussion on the motion? Counselor Jackson?
Yes.
I'll get to you, Counselor Duncan.
Just curious as to how they're going to hang it if it doesn't fit. Oh, it doesn't fit the policy, okay, I thought it physically didn't fit, I beg your pardon, never mind.
Counselor Duncan?
I -- the problem I have is that we might be opening up the door to a lot more groups wishing to use the banner posting area.
Okay. Counselor Jackson?
I beg your pardon, the only answer to that would be, I beg your pardon, that we have a whole list of other people, there's only so many, what, we've got, oh, a couple of -- almost a couple of dozen of people that already put their banners up, so when we're overwhelmed with banners, we just say no, if there's room, there's room.
Mr. Givertai?
Your Worship, the main issue is that we just wanted confirmation that they were nonprofit. I believe they are nonprofit and would qualify, they're just not a registered nonprofit society, which is why staff felt we best bring it forward to you for confirmation that it was okay, that we're okay to do it in such a case where they can't actually prove their nonprofit status. They do appear to fit the criteria, in our opinion, but just didn't feel we'd be stepping out a little bit if we weren't able to physically confirm that.
Okay, all right. Any further discussion at all?
And they have already had it there for the past two years, so this isn't something that's new.
The point is that they had previously got it, but we're just trying to stick to the letter of the policy in that aspect and confirm that those that are being put up actually can confirm their nonprofits.
Okay. So, if there's more further discussion, I'll call a question on it. All those in favor? Opposed, that's carried. So, we move to item 7.4, which is Committee Appointment Changes.
I just would like to pull the second, where is it here, for the Couchin Green Community and have that done separately, so that I can --
It is, it's --
No, there are one --
I'll just, I would like confirmation from Ms. Robertson, is because of the way this is termed, are these separate?
They're all separate, it's just that they were lumped together and then so I think maybe it's moving at first or at the end, so that she can --
Okay, so, there are four, and Counselor Staples is asking one to be separated, so we'll just, well, if that's okay with council, we'll do that. So, maybe what I'll do is I'll read out the other three, and then we'll come back to that one. So, the first one is that Counselor Jackson be appointed as Chair of the Environment Committee. The second one is that the Councilon Valley Historical Society representative on the Totem Subcommittee be changed from a voting member to a non-voting liaison position, and It's a very lengthy motion, or if council has read their package clearly, and maybe that the terms of reference for that Totem Subcommittee be updated to reflect this change, and that Kathy Wilson be appointed to the Councilon -- as the Councilon Valley Seniors I could have Ms. Geno maybe just summarize some of the points on it, so if I could have Organization Representative to the Advisory Committee on Disability Issues for a term a mover and seconder, and just have her touch the highlights of some of this, okay? ending December 2018. Okay, second. And any discussion on those?
Sure.
Hearing none, all in favor? So, I guess what I'll do, before you go into the points, just read the motion out, Opposed? The last one, which is that the Councilon Green Community appointee be changed from so the public can see what it's about. So, this is with respect to the Province BC's Climate Change Leadership Plan, and a voting member to a non-voting liaison position, and that the terms of reference for the Environment it's the feedback, so we are providing feedback to the province with respect to the plan, Committee be updated to reflect this change. So, if I'm -- and this motion has a number of points in it that we would provide as feedback.
And I'll be leaving for a conflict business.
Okay. So, Ms. Geno, if you'd like to speak to that? And were you able to hear the motion, Counselor Duncan?
Sir, Your Worship.
Yes.
I just noticed that Counselor Jackson was looking at her iPad, and unless you logged out and logged back in, you won't see the new motion, so the council could refer to the front pages.
Yes, I heard the motion, thanks.
Okay. So, it'll be on your agenda pages now. So, it was moved and all is seconded, so if there any discussion on that motion?
If you could go ahead.
I'm sorry, did you want me to read out the motion as well?
Okay, hearing none, all those in favor? No, just give us a summary of some of the things that --
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, thank you. And if we can retrieve Counselor Staples?
Okay, so the province began their review of the previous climate action plan last year by developing a climate action team and doing some public consultation, and the climate action team released a report with 32 recommendations to the province for an updated climate leadership plan, and municipalities along with the public have been given an opportunity to comment on that, on the proposed plan. There aren't, there's still a lot of details that would need to be worked out through the adoption of the plan. Some of the recommendations relate to the previous greenhouse gas reduction targets that were set by the province, and so there's some slight changes to those, specifically that legislating, previously the legislated target was to reduce the levels by 33% by 2020, and this has been recommended to be changed to a reduction of 40% by 2030. So, that's one of the recommendations to the province, and then there are a set of recommendations in other areas as well, and so we worked with staff at the regional district on developing a resolution to jointly, if council wishes, to come from the city and the regional district. And I've also attached for information the report from staff at the regional district as well as a recommendation, a letter that has been approved by North Couchin's council to go to the province. And so, some of these items in the recommendation that we've developed include that the city recommends that the province take bold action in a number of areas related to climate action, so including that the province commit to ongoing community energy and emissions inventory work, as well as tracking other data to provide to local governments, and also providing the necessary data and mapping to inform climate risk assessments at the regional and local levels, also providing funding streams for regional districts and local governments to assist with some of this work, and support in other areas of climate change adoption as well.
Okay, thank you, that's a reasonable summary. There's quite a bit here. I will read the main part of the motion. I'm not going to go into all the details with specific, but it says that council endorsed the following resolution and direct staff to forward it to the Councilon Valley Regional District and the province in response to the climate leadership team recommendations for the proposed climate chain, climate leadership plan, that the province government take bold, concerted actions on the climate with a particular focus on providing local governments with the tools and resources in order to meet their expected commitments, in particular the City of Duncan calls upon the province, and there is quite a list of things here to be supported, and this is simply feedback to the province, and then they will, of course, incorporate the feedback in into the final climate action plan. So, if there is a mover and a seconder, then we can put it on the table for discussion. Move, can you second, second, okay, discussion? Counselor Jackson?
Yes.
Okay, I've got me, Counselor Duncan.
Mr. Mizouni, was this not the issue that we saw the letter from North Couchin, which they asked for sunset clause for LNG? Is this the same issue? Did we saw the letter from North Couchin? I'm wondering if there's any appetite on this council to add that, that we recommend there be a sunset clause for LNG development.
Your Worship, that is an attachment F in the package, if you wanted to see the -- I think there's lots of the recommendations from the North Couchin's resolution that may also want to consider in addition to that LNG law.
But that's not in our --
It's not currently in the CVRD and our motion.
So, I don't know, actually, I tried to re-log it again, and it's not here.
It's, yes, here's. Counselor Duncan?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a question to Flatter Michelle there. With the recent Paris agreements, are we sort of dumping the gun with this, or not?
Sorry, which agreements?
The ones that federal government has committed to in the recent climate action workshop in Paris.
The, I'm not sure, the province has continued with this process after, after the climate talks in Paris as well, so.
I think there's, you know, there's obviously the national imperative with respect to climate change action, and the provincial ministers and Minister of Environment at the federal level are meeting now to make those things congruent. This plan is not actually in its final stage, this is part of the feedback process and the input process, so we're simply providing feedback to the provincial government with respect to how we're reacting to their, to the recommendations in their plan. So, this is still an ongoing process, it's not a final piece, it's not the final piece of input, I don't believe either, we can, we can add to it, and I think to make sure we're clear with our things, that we can add, there are a few days, and we can add other resolutions if we want towards other initiatives or other feedback we want to give them. So, this is the feedback that we've done in concert with the input process, in fact, I attended a webinar with our staff and the district staff to go over all of this, so there are people from all over the province providing verbal feedback at the time, and this is formalizing that feedback we were giving at the time into more cogent kind of feedback, so.
So, I'm confused. You're telling me that we can add to this list sometime in the next couple of days?
Yep.
At, at water opportunity?
This would be the opportunity for council to add to the recommendation.
This would be the opportunity, okay.
The challenge, the challenge with it is that these other separate documents are, you know, formed in another forum, and we weren't as in part of that forum. So, if you wanted to, just hang on, I need to summarize it. If you wanted to adopt these complete, someone else's complete thing, because their environment committee had, had quite a long period of time to, to look over this, and that's how the North Couchin handled it, the regional district did it somewhat differently, and we've worked with them to lead up to, to these particular things, so.
I don't need to accept their whole letter. I like what you have written here, however, I would also like to take one point, which is point F out of their letter, which is to establish a sunset clause for liquid natural gas production.
Okay, so I would ask that you make amendment to this motion then, at this point?
Okay. I make an, I would like to make an amendment to this motion to add, establish a sunset clause for liquid natural gas production.
Second.
Could I speak to the motion?
Second.
And this is on the amendment, so speaking to the amendment to the motion?
I feel that it would be at this point in time, that if council could adopt all of the points that North Couchin raised, rather than just the one. One of the things that we have brought to the UBCI repeatedly is about the carbon tax for the biofuels, and that's in here as well. Also, there's mention of water in here, which doesn't, which needs to be emphasized. So, I feel like there's nothing, I support everything else that's on here, so I would like to just add the whole list that they have.
Okay, well, let's, just so we're clear, we were dealing with the amendment with respect to the sunset clause for LNG, so let's adopt that amendment, and if we want further amendments, I would get those, so. This is discussing the amendment at this point?
Right, I would like to know, is there a deadline, are we coming up to a deadline?
Yes, we are, yeah. Counselor Horgan?
Can I get a clarification on what the sunset?
Just one person at a time, thank you. One person at a time, please, thank you.
Can I get a clarification on what you mean by the sunset clause?
I think that in the climate action plan, what North Couchin is suggesting, that the, that a phase out of liquid natural gas proposals and development would have a sunset clause, so it would be in place for a period of time, but be phased out over time, so.
Yeah, and the reason why I'm suggesting that is because liquid natural gas production is very high in greenhouse gas emissions, so I find it kind of surprising that they're looking at ways to cut down greenhouse gas emissions, and yet one of their, their major thrusts with this present government is for LNG development, not only, well, certainly in the north, but even as close as Mill Bay, if that's to be believed. Anyway, I'm, I have talked to a lot of people who are extremely concerned about that, and that's why I'm adding this, but I also hear what you're saying, and I'm just so sorry that the, that the deadline is so close that we have to make this decision tonight, and yet you're saying we can still add to it, but actually, it's tonight, right?
Effectively, yes, but we, you know, I think you can provide feedback to the government any time, honestly, you know, they may have had to put a date, and oftentimes, the notice to that date is somewhat in short, so there was activities within staff to basically get to a point where we could give some cogent feedback, and we know within the capacity that all these organizations have, they did what they could do, so this is where we're at. So, we're on the amendment, I think I have Counselor Duncan to speak to this?
Oh, I'm in, I support Counselor Jackson on this amendment.
Okay, so is there any further discussion on the amendment then? Counselor Bruce?
Thank you. I don't think I have enough information to support that amendment. I'd need to be updated a little bit more before I change anything like that. Thank you.
Okay, any new ideas, further ideas, discussion? Okay, having none, we're going to call a question on the amendment. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, opposed? So, the motion carries, and so we will go to the main motion as amended, and which is the, and so if there's any other amending motions, I'll take those now.
I would still like to move the amendment that I suggested earlier, that we do adopt the rest of North Couchin's.
Okay, and there are, I think, how many items run there?
I'll second that.
Just hang on. Ms. Robertson?
Sorry, the value is dead everywhere on the lights here, but the CAO was just indicating that on North Couchin's document, item 1 and 2 is already integrated within the report, but 3A through G would be the additional items that council tables is looking to, so because council's already done F, if there was an amendment for the remainder, it would be 3A, B, C, D, E, and G.
Okay, 3V of the North Couchin report in the package, so does everybody understand that? So, that's been moved, is there, and there's a seconder for that?
Yes.
Okay, and would you like to speak to it, counsel? Okay, would anybody like discussion on that motion for those additions? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, thank you. So, we move on to bylaws, and we have bylaw number 3120.1, .01, 2016, Waterworks Regulation Amendment. The council rescind third reading of the Waterworks Regulation, bylaw number 3120.01, 2016, a bylaw to change the water restriction sprinkling times and housekeeping amendments, and that council reread third reading of the Waterworks Regulation, bylaw number 3120.01, 2016, as amended, to remove the reference to weeper hoses.
So moved.
Okay, seconder. Okay, any discussion on that? Counselor, or, sorry, I've demoted you. Ms. Robertson, would you just like to explain that housekeeping change?
Sure. The original report where council gave for three readings was dealing with the sprinkling times, changing them from eight to 10 in the morning and afternoon to seven to nine in the morning and the afternoon. The amendment is just to remove reference to weeper hoses, because when we met as a group, we felt that weeper hoses still meets the criteria for micro drip irrigation, but we just don't, we didn't want to see the, the geyser hoses, I guess, the soaker hoses.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, so that was moved and seconded, is there any discussion on that? All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. So, we move to bylaw number 3134, 2016, Financial Plan. This is to adopt the five-year financial plan, the council adopt the financial plan, bylaw number 3134, 2016, a bylaw to set the city's five-year financial Okay, hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Okay, thank you. So we move on to bylaws, and we have bylaw number three, one, two, zero, point one, point zero, one, twenty sixteen, Waterworks Regulation Amendment. The council rescind third reading of the Waterworks Regulation, bylaw number three, one, two, zero, point zero, one, twenty sixteen, a bylaw to change the water restriction sprinkling times and housekeeping amendments, and that council reread third reading of the Waterworks Regulation bylaw number three, one, two, zero, point zero, one, twenty sixteen, as amended, to remove the reference to weeper hoses.
So moved.
Okay, seconder? Okay, any discussion on that? Counselor, or, sorry, I've demoted you. Ms. Robertson, would you just like to explain that housekeeping change?
Sure. The original report where council gave for three readings was dealing with the sprinkling times, changing them from eight to ten in the morning and afternoon, to seven to nine in the morning and the afternoon. The amendment is just to remove reference to weeper hoses, because when we met as a group, we felt that weeper hoses still meets the criteria for micro drip irrigation, but we just don't, we didn't want to see the, the geyser hoses, I guess, the soaker hoses.
Yeah, okay, great. Okay, so that was moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on that? All those in favor? Opposed?
Aye.
The motion carries. So we move to bylaw number three, one, three, four, twenty sixteen, Financial Plan. This is to adopt the five-year financial plan. The council adopt the Financial Plan, bylaw number three, one, three, four, twenty sixteen, a bylaw to set the city's five-year financial plan for the period twenty sixteen to twenty twenty.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, okay. And Ms. Soldaro, would you like to just give the very briefest of highlights? I don't have to go through it in detail, but.
So the proposed financial plan includes a two-
I don't know whether that microphone's on, is it?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
It includes a two-point-nine-eight percent property tax increase. As noted previously, a lot of that increase is due to things outside of the city's direct control. Our capital projects for the year include expenditures to complete the dicking projects and major capital costs on Second Street and some undergrounding of the hydro on the corner of Canada and Government.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or discussion on the five-year now financial plan bylaw? Okay, hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. Thank you to staff for helping, working with us to prepare that budget. We move to item eight-three, which is the bylaw three, one, four, seven, twenty fifteen, Development Cost Charges. The council rescind third reading of the Development Cost Charge, bylaw number three, one, four, seven, twenty fifteen, and that council reread third reading of Development Cost Charge, bylaw number three, one, four, seven, twenty fifteen, as amended, by removing the existing Schedule A and replacing it with the Schedule A attached to the March seventh, twenty sixteen, Report of Director of Finance.
Mr. Mayor, I think I'll step out, just to be consistent on the DCCs.
I just want, yeah, I think, okay, so in this case, yes. And could you just declare, declare your conflict at this point?
Just, we own some commercial property, so the DCCs could affect that.
Okay, great, thank you. So did I call a mover and seconder? I believe I did?
No, not yet.
No, can I have a mover and seconder?
So moved.
Moved and seconded, and I think this, for the public's perspective, we need a little bit of background as to why we're rescinding third reading and replacing these schedules.
So council gave third reading to a new DCC bylaw. It was sent in to the inspector of Municipalities. The province has asked that grants which have not yet been secured not be included in the calculation of development cost charges. And so several projects that we had on our list included grant funding that has not yet been secured, such as the moving up of JEB Outfall, for which we talked about a grant application today. So staff have revised the project list to remove any unsecured grant funding and to actually change the project list so that we can keep the DCCs at a reasonable level. And we will be potentially seeing more amendments to the bylaw in the future as grant funding becomes known.
Okay, so I know we had a fairly healthy discussion about this at the committee, the whole meeting, and it's been a normal practice in the past, doing so with the DCC bylaws, and, and this is kind of, I guess, a reen, or an enforcement, a reinforcement by the province of something that was always regulated, but a non, a normal practice. So we will see our DCC bylaw come back on a fairly regular basis now to be amended, to take that into account. Yes, so a little bit more work, but not too much, I guess. So any discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That's carried. And just also a note to that, that doesn't affect the exemption portions of the bylaws that we pass with respect to new developments, so. There was no debate about you coming back in, so that's, yes, good. So we move then to correspondence on the agenda. We have item nine-one, which is a proclamation for World Autism Awareness Day, and that April second, twenty sixteen, be proclaimed as World Autism Awareness Day in the city of Duncan.
So moved.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? That's carried. And we have another proclamation for MS Awareness Month, and that may be proclaimed as MS Awareness Month for the Multiple Sclerosis Society of Canada.
So moved.
Okay, moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we move to reports of council and the mayor. Are there any counselors who would like to report on anything at this time?
Yeah.
Counselor Jackson? Okay. Okay, and I'll try to be brief with my report. Even though I've taken it a little bit easier over the last month and a half, I have also been extremely busy. I'm kind of surprising myself by that, but I attended a workshop at the regional district on the regional recreation, which was a workshop to bring board members up to speed with respect to how recreation facilities and other things are funded throughout the region. And many, some of them are funded locally, are funded subregionally, and some, very few, funded regionally. So the board wanted to come back and have a better understanding of that and develop terms of reference at that time for, for a committee of the board to, again, look forward to ways that we may be able to improve the fairness and equity of the funding formulas, and then also support facilities throughout the region in a better way. So it was a good, it was a good workshop. They had the consultant from PERC, which has done a number of reports for the regional district over the years, and it's been an on-long, long-standing kind of issue in the region. So with all of that data, there was some movement to develop the committee and to amend the terms of reference so that we would come back. So the board, it was not a overwhelming majority, but it's certainly a majority to say that we would look at it and maybe look at it in different ways than we have before, so that'll be interesting to see as that goes forward. Skipping over a few things, of course, I attended with, with staff members and people from the regional district, the, the climate leadership webinar that talked about the plan, a draft plan, and there was good discussion. Mayor Lefebure, actually, from North Couchin, was quite involved in the webinar, so he would, they, they were quite prepared, bringing their pieces forward. But we heard from people from all over the province who were providing feedback with respect to that, that climate leadership plan. So we'd expect the government probably would come back in coming months with, with something in a draft form, is to, you know, provide what the feedback was. Met also with Mr. Durvatai. This was after our committee, the whole meeting, which was held on the seventh, to meet with the Summer Festival Society and the BIA with respect to changes that Duncan Couchin Summer Festival was planning for this year, and some of the changes that the BIA Business Improvement Area in downtown was looking at. So we just encouraged them to really collaborate with the things, that council would be open to hearing solutions from both of them, that they were both satisfied with, with respect to kicking off the festival in the way the summer festival wants, and also meeting the needs of the downtown merchants for their promotions throughout the summer. So I understand they have, they have met and will be hopefully coming back with some ideas to us so that we're, we're clear about what, what is wanted and needed for the changes. So on the Friday, I attended the IST Island Coast Economic Trust Regional Advisory Committee in Ladysmith, and we elected a new member to that rack and also to the IST Board, and just like to congratulate Ross Forrest for being elected to the Island Coast Economic Trust Board. So we have good representation from the south, mid-south and central part of the island on IST, and so I think he's, he attended his first meeting on Friday, full board meeting in Courtney, and provided good input, and I think it's a really rewarding experience for the people on that board, because it's quite a, it's quite a collaborative and regional view of developing economic development infrastructure on, on the coast and the island. So I congratulate him for that. And that really covers it for, for now. So Counselor Jackson?
Thank you very much. February the fourth, I attended the Community Advisory Board for Aboriginal homelessness at the Haye-Uleum House Friendship, and our strategic planning is ongoing. And it's pretty interesting, they, they note that the age of homeless people is, used to be around anywhere from, say, fifty-six, sixty-three, and over a fairly short period of time, it's dropping very significantly. And they're seeing a lot more homeless youth, which is pretty problematic, because, of course, they don't have any place for homeless youth really, like at Warmland House or anything. So a lot of them are couch surfing, some of them are in the bushes, many of them show up first thing in the morning at the community center. So they're trying to deal with this as best they can, along with people at the community center as well. They have a plan in place, or they're trying to put a plan in place, I should say. March the fourth, I was with the mayor and other counselors at the C Couchin Women Against Violence One Billion Rising event at noon, which was really well-attended. And on March the ninth, I, on behalf of John Horgan, who was out of town, went to the Board of the Chamber of Commerce, which was an eye-opener for me. I felt like a chicken at a fox convention. Very nice group of people, and they're, of course, very busy organizing their Black Tie Awards. So it was, it was a pleasure to meet them all.
Okay, thank you. One event I did attend, and I'd forgotten it because it wasn't on my calendar, was the, the Vancouver Island Economic Alliance had a, a series of meetings in different regions of the island to talk about secondary and improved wood manufacturing and use of our forest resource. So that was quite interesting. They had Woodworks BC and Canada there, as well as, there were a number of sort of secondary manufacturers, or manufacturer of, of higher value wood, finished wood products, Pacific Homes and others, that were talking about how we could work together to try to start to develop a way to get better resource use out of our forests and, and to increase secondary manufacturing. I know that initiative was looked at in quite a bit of depth when we had the ready program here, which preceded our existing economic development program, which was the Regional Economic Development Initiative. So it's kind of a rebreath of it, but one, we did learn a lot about what was happening here, and the Couchin Valley still has one of the highest bases of employment in the forest industries. So if we can find ways to, that, I'll add more value to that, and with the private forest companies, especially here, because that's predominantly what we have, is private-owned forest land. So it was eye-opening, and I think it opened a dialogue, which was, was pretty useful. So I hope, I hope there's further, further work on that, so. And now we'll move to question period. So is there anybody in the audience that would like to ask a question? Okay, don't be shy.
No pressure.
We don't normally have an audience, no pressure. Any questions of council at this point? Counselor Jackson?
Yeah, possibly through you to Mr. Durvatai in regard to your report under planning and development in Fifteen Canada Avenue Development Permit, so this is the new development permit since they redid their plans. Recommendations of the ADP are still being reviewed by the applicant for their proposed DP amendment. I thought that was a month and a half ago, and yet the building is continuing along, and if they don't have a development permit amendment, how can they keep building? I'm confused.
So, your worship, the existing development permit, the bulk of the work that they are currently constructing is in compliance with the existing development permit. The area that they're, that the DP, actually, the amendment would touch on was to not build primarily a portion of the building. So we actually, staff discussed today, reviewing to make sure that there isn't anything that they're doing that would have been actually constructing something that was considered in the amendment. Otherwise, we'll have to, we'll have to discuss what the options are. But to my knowledge, at this moment, so far, they're building still just the components of what was previously approved. We are, and a bit surprised that we haven't got that, those, that, that final feedback from them so that they can present to the ADP, so we can move forward with the amendment. So we'll be following up with them on the status of that, because we don't want it to hang out for too long. Because at some point, they're going to run up against a timeline where they need that amendment in order to progress to a particular point, and we don't want to-
Thank you very much.
Michelle, or Counselor Stevens?
I just wanted to let council know, too, that the deadline for community input for the climate action plan is March twenty-fifth, so anyone can go online and actually send input in one in the province, so.
Okay, and I guess just maybe questions for Ms. Soldaro, just, I know that the auditors were in, so where are they in that process with respect to the audited financial statements?
So the auditors have finished their work here at the city. They take back their findings, and then they go through what's called an audit review at their office. They are actually currently visiting other local governments. I think that their audit review of their work here is started, scheduled to take place later this week. We won't have our final audited financial statements until after we get the JUB financial statements for North Couchin, so probably closer to June.
Okay, oh, that's, yeah, there's always a delay there. Okay. All right, great, thank you. So we move to a resolution to go into closed meeting. Item twelve-one, this meeting will close the public under the following section of the Community Charter, nineteen-one-C, Labor Relations or Other Employee Relations. So we'll just take a five-minute break, and so we can clear the, clear the council chambers. The motion to a-
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Counsel Duncan, seconded by Counselor Jackson. Everyone in favor? Opposed?
Aye.